I am joined by my colleague, Mr. Curran Price. And I would like to welcome everyone to the special meeting of Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee. It's a busy month in this committee, and so many agenda items to get through this month. That's why we had to call today's special. Plus, we're looking at a few timelines, time certens for August 1st in relation to our commission appointments. So, we are expected to be joined by Councilmember Tom LaBanche, who is running a bit late, and I knew that in advance also. So, what we'll do is we'll move forward on these items, and then, when Mr. LaBanche gets here, we'll take our votes and go from there and move them forward. And, Mr. Price, if it looks like there are no public comment cards as of yet, and I would like to take Items 3, 6, 7, and 9 on consent without objection.
No objection here.
Thank you, sir. And the reason, we have one disability commissioner who has withdrawn her submission, her nomination, and then, is that right? Yeah, and then one who's not here. So, we will do that.
Who is withdrawn?
Oh, actually, it's Item 1, and it's Elizabeth Fasthorse, Native American Indian Commission, has withdrawn. And Lisa Schlesinger, disability, is not able to be here today, but we need to move that forward. And I don't see any problems with that appointment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Item 1 to be a note and file, since she's withdrawn her nomination.
That's right. Item 1 is a note and file. And what do we have here at number 10? And 10. Okay, well, I'll get to that later. So, that being said, Mr. Lid, would you please read Item 2?
Item 2, Communication from the Mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. Randall Murphy to the Los Angeles City/County Native American Indian Commission for the term ending October 7th, 2016.
And, Mr. Murphy, if you'd please come up. And, as he's taking his seat, I want to let you know, I had the pleasure of having a good chat with Mr. Murphy just the other day, and I welcome you to this committee and congratulate you on your assignment.
Thank you, Councilman Price. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be nominated, and I appreciate the faith that you've shown in me. If you have any questions, I'd be more than interested in answering them.
If you wouldn't mind sharing with Mr. Price and the chamber a little bit about your background, your tribe that you belong to, and your outlook on the commission.
Thank you. I'm Choctaw by blood, Lakota by adoption. I went to the University of Nebraska and Yale Law School. I have been active in Native American affairs throughout my entire life. I've headed a number of organizations. I've been the director of the Waukeah Foundation for 20 years, which provides clothing and toys to children on the Pine Ridge Reservation and Rosebud Reservations in South Dakota during the holiday season, and supports Native American ceremonies on the Pine Ridge and Rosebud Reservations as well. I believe the commission can serve an important role in the county and city of Los Angeles. It is a wonderful opportunity for people to become involved in helping the, as we refer to ourselves, the indigent indigenous of the city and the county, and providing services for them. I think that the role of the commission can be expanded with a visionary approach to interact with LAUSD. We have a Native American section of the LAUSD already in place, and that might be a way to dovetail this city's Native American commission activities into help support those programs and such things as that, and of course, support for elderly programs, which are already existent.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And just if you could elaborate on a few things. You mentioned the indigent in the Native American population, which is high percentages of poverty, health issues, et cetera, that I think the general population doesn't fully understand, and you certainly recognize that, and I'm glad you mentioned that. Could you elaborate a little bit on your particular professional experience? Because I think that's what I take a lot of satisfaction in, in terms of the benefit you offer to this commission.
I am an attorney, and have been with the California Department of Justice for 16 years. And in that work, I have represented the Department of Healthcare Services, and one of the things that I've been very proud to be able to accomplish is helping various departments within the state, not only healthcare services, but Department of Mental Health and other entities, understand the needs of some of our population groups, such as the medical issues and such things as that, when services are provided, and why some individuals may be reluctant to seek aid, and their forms might not be as well put together as one might hope. And it's been an honor to be able to help different organizations see how those things actually work within a poverty-ridden community. With the Department of Mental Health, I was very proud to be able to accomplish getting sweat lodges in state mental hospitals and facilitating that when I interfaced with the Department of Mental Health, because the role of spirituality in Native American life is very important. And without those kinds of things, recidivism and rehabilitation and just mental stability can be very difficult to achieve. And the services that the city and the county can provide to help people who sometimes are very confused by the system cannot be understated.
Thank you. Mr. Price, any?
Yeah, you spoke of increasing cooperation, collaboration with the school district. Could you go into that a little more detail and talk about how you see the schools being a better partner?
Well, Sandy Franks is with the LAUSD. She's a senior person there. She is also native. I believe she's Cherokee by blood. And they have, within LAUSD now, a Native American Children's Program, which is specifically focused on Native American kids in the LAUSD system, to try to help them graduate, first and foremost, and then also help them apply to colleges and such things as that. And a lot of us involved in the community have been helping kids understand what the collegiate application process is. When I was young, as many people in my generation were, we had no family members who had ever gone to college. Most of our family members hadn't graduated from high school. And so, it was very difficult to understand exactly what you were supposed to do, how to apply to college, what the applications were, what the questions meant, what scholarship aid was available. And the commission, I think, can interface with LAUSD to help people, inform people regarding those processes among the Native American Children's Community. And the fact that such a program already exists but is overwhelmed because of the understaffing and overpopulation issues, that would make it a very easy thing to help push a little harder on and help those kids out.
Thank you. Good. Thank you so much, Mr. Randall, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy. And what we'll do is, when Mr. LaBanche arrives and we have quorum, we'll take all of the votes at the same time. So, I appreciate.
Thank you again.
And congratulate you. And, Mr. Lid, what I'd like to do is, on Item 10, I'm back to Item 10, and that is, without objection, note and file Item 10 as well, because it folds into Item 11 in relation to Prop. K. Let's see. So, now, we will go to Items 4 and 5 together, and I'd like to invite up to the table Patricia Williams and Cheryl Revkin, appointments to the Disability Access Commission.
Item number 4, Communications from the Mayor and City Ethics Commission relative to the appointment of Ms. Patricia Williams to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2017. And Item number 5, Communication from the Mayor and City Ethics Commission relative to the appointment of Dr. Cheryl Revkin to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2016.
Terrific. Thank you so much, and congratulations on your appointments as well. I just want to say that I've known Cheryl Revkin for 12 years. A Council District 13 resident, a Silver Lake leader with her business, and she'll go into that in a little bit. And I'm very grateful for you to be stepping up and volunteering for this important commission, and the experience you bring to light here. And then, I had the real pleasure of sitting down with Pat just the other day, might have been yesterday. I'm getting to know her a little bit. They all blend. And I think that you bring a great perspective with your professional and life experience as well to these commissions. So, thank you, and congratulations on your appointments. And we'll start with you, Pat, if you could just say a little bit about yourself, your outlook, your experience.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I am very honored to have been asked to join this commission. I think being able to serve the people of the city of Los Angeles is wonderful. My trade is, I'm a retired stationary operating engineer, which means that I did my entire career doing building maintenance and operations. I come from the perspective of hands-on maintenance in high rises, as well as industry down in Orange County. We did all phases of the repairs. I oversaw, as an engineer, the tenant improvements, construction build-outs. I rose to Assistant Chief Engineer, where then I had to turn in reports that involved not only the repairs, ADA compliance, but also had to do with budgetary issues, which everything is all about money, ultimately. So, I had a lot of experience with that, 33 years' worth of it. And then, the second part of it is, when I was in field placement in junior college, I worked with several policy wheelchair-bound, for the most part, students, youth. And then, when my stepmother became disabled, I had a whole different experience of learning firsthand the challenges people go through when they're disabled and when there is no access. So, that was a very big learning experience. So, I'm very proud to be able to be here to represent all these people.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams, and Cheryl.
Hi. I also want to thank the city and Mayor Garcetti for appointing me. I really love LA. I've lived here over 45 years, and really am honored to serve the city. I appreciate it. I guess my perspective is that I've been a chiropractor. I practiced for 33 years in Silver Lake, and I made a special point of making my office accessible to disabled people. I saw a really broad spectrum of patients, but people who were paraplegics and disabled in various ways. I also volunteered my time at the Hollywood Sunset Free Clinic and saw patients that they referred to me for, I think, two decades. I was a volunteer there. My brother had polio when he was little. He was part of the polio epidemic, so I had a perspective from a very early age of what it is to be disabled. And then, unfortunately, I became disabled three and a half years ago and had to retire. So, I have my own personal experience. I have been a community activist and founded the Silver Lake Chamber of Commerce and was the president for 26 years. And during that time, we encountered many, many different issues, and I feel like I've exhibited over many years sort of leadership qualities, so that I hope to bring to the commission. I've been on the board of many different organizations, asked to be on the Board of Directors, and still function that way. And I have, I would say, a sort of an extensive knowledge of health issues. Really?
Wonderful. Thank you. Just, I'll just ask one question that you can both answer, and then, my colleague, Mr. Price. So, you clearly have the life and professional experiences that you both just talked about. What do you see are some of the challenges, as obvious as it might be, facing access for the disabled in Los Angeles? You mentioned money. That's certainly an issue, but in terms of the actual infrastructure and built environment.
Well, I think basically it's transportation, really. I know within our community of Silver Lake, there were so many streets where the curbs were not made accessible to people in wheelchairs, and I actually remember petitioning about that. It's just so difficult, if you're disabled, to get around, to actually get to a location, much less once you get there, for each business in Los Angeles to be accessible to disabled people. And I would kind of make that a focus, really.
I think that access also is crucial. One of the main experiences that I had with my stepmother in small-town USA was going to visit her lawyer and having steps and a wheelchair. And I mean, I was shocked when I ran into that, and then not having the pullbars in the restrooms. I mean, the issues go on. I understand that there is always a financial component to everything, but at some point, we have to balance human needs and human access with the financial impacts. And sometimes, that's a very difficult and a huge hurdle to overcome. But I've been on both sides of it, so I understand all the challenges, and would like to hope that I can bring an open mind to help people learn how to deal with all those challenges.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Price?
Well, what do you, both of you, I can thank you both for your service, past service, and willingness to continue serving in this capacity. But what do you see as opportunities to better inform, better advise the public about challenges, perhaps, that exist, or about opportunities to work with the disabled, members of the disabled community in ways that we've not before? Do you see any, I don't know, public interest, public service kinds of programs that we could be initiating that we aren't, or that we could expand that exists currently?
I think I need to learn a little more how the city operates, but I do know that the disabled community has communities within it that I think that we could approach and get, you know, specific advice from them, and then go to the city to enact legislation, I would say, you know, really, especially on a local level. I think legislation is where it rests.
And one of the things that I've noticed, I take the metro a lot, and I've been very heartened by the fact that there is very good signage. You know when you go up to the metro station where the ramps are, where the cars are that have the wheelchair access. I think that we need to have more of that, not just on the metro, but around and about, so that people know which direction to go in for more handicapped access. And aside from that, just giving people an opportunity of knowing when they see something, who they can turn it into, and where they can go if their sidewalks are a problem in their area. Who do they go to in order to turn that in? I think people don't know that a lot of times. And reaching out to the disabled communities, as my partner here said, I think is very important.
Wonderful. And we've been joined by our colleague, Mr. Gil Sadio, of the great Council District 1. And welcome, Mr. Sadio.
Let me just, yes, just answer if I may. And, you know, these issues are equally challenging in communities of need. You know, frequently where you have low-income citizens, streets that aren't cut, where you don't have the curb cuts, where you don't have the kind of access that we like to see citywide, frequently it's exacerbated even in poorer areas. I just hope that you'll be mindful and alert to ways we can make sure that all of our communities are benefiting and are accessible, especially to those who are disabled, wherever they may happen to live.
I also think it's important to think of disability as more than just physical. For instance, if you're hearing impaired, to make sure that they're accessible, a hearing impaired person is accessible to the city and what goes on with the city, and that their life is made easier by the city of LA, so that they can be, you know, a productive resident of Los Angeles, as one example. Of course, you know, vision impaired is another one, goes down the line.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Price. Okay. Mr. Sadio?
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. Thank you for committing your time. I hope that you are our eyes and ears and are conscious. I was listening to you when we came in about balancing budgets, but with ADA, some things are a matter of law.
Exactly.
And there is no compromise on that.
Exactly.
And so, that ADA sets a template or basis, a baseline for a priority that has to be funded, and we don't have an option. We have to comply. And so, we look to you for your leadership in this area. Public space is one of our biggest concerns, one of my biggest concerns, because if we don't create the right public space, then there really is nothing of a city. It's people who just home, their homes. And it's in the public area that we express what our values are. So, if we don't have clean restrooms that are accessible in our public parks, then our parks become irrelevant, because no family, no disabled person, no one can utilize them, enjoy them, appreciate them if you can't stay. And so, it's a big priority for, at least for our office. And the same with us, with respect to sidewalks and the streets. Very challenging, obviously, because someone convinced the entire nation that they could have more for less, and that they didn't have to pay for it. And so, for the last 40 years, we've been convincing ourselves that we can, and nobody wants to pay. And yet, we all need sidewalks at work, we need streets at work, we need teachers that are paid well, we need law enforcement people that are paid well for very important jobs in our community. But I'm getting a little adrift here, so I'll come back and thank you for doing this, and ask you to be our conscious on all these matters.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And well said, Mr. Sadio. All right. So, we have our quorum, and I think without objection, we can recommend that you move forward for confirmation. Both City Councils.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we, you have a quorum now?
Oh, yeah. So, you're, you're.
Thank you so much. It's nice to meet everybody.
We'll see you at council.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. And I think what I'd like to do is bring Randall, if you could come back up again. And Randall, we asked him a few questions, pointing to the Native American Commission. And, Mr. Sadio, if you have any questions or comments?
You know, we've been very, we've got this incredible office called the Office of Immigrant Affairs in the mayor's office. What are we doing? What can the city do more to address the concerns of Native Americans in the city?
That's a very long, long list, so let me give you a short answer. As Councilman O'Farrell is aware, because he does have Indian ancestry, there are approximately 200,000 natives in the city of Los Angeles, which is the largest urban population of natives of anywhere in the country. Los Angeles has done a wonderful job in recognizing the native population. Mayor Villalobosha had the opening ceremonies here in City Hall every year. I was on the planning committee for that for six years, I believe. And that's the only city in the country that does that. And that is noteworthy in and of itself. So, we have awareness here, and then your question now goes, what do we do with that awareness? If I understand you correctly. And that, as was pointed out in the previous comments, is often a question of money. What the commission does is increase Native American cultural awareness through various events that occur. Now, the city doesn't actually pay for that. The funds of the city go to another entity in the county. But what the community does, by the community, the members of the community with funds, often the casino, or the tribes with casino money, they donate to the commission or to entities that then support the commission's work. To, for the Sparks Game, where on next Friday, on the 8th, we have Native American Night at Sparks. And that shows, you know, they have the kids mostly, particularly kids in foster care, of which there is a high percentage of natives. We provide them tickets, and we do the same thing with the Galaxy, we do the same thing with the Kings and the other major sporting events here. And that reaches out to the kids to help them see these things and have that night and that kind of thing. So, and as I mentioned earlier, LAUSD has a Native American group within the system already, headed by Sandy Franks, which works with Native American kids in LAUSD to get them through school and get them to graduate, and then help them apply to college. And that's the focus on the children, which are the future. The other side of the coin is the elderly, and what kind of services and help we can provide to the elderly within the city of Los Angeles. And again, you have a function of funds. There's always transportation issues with the elderly, especially in a poverty-riddled population. And the Native American population is, has a high percentage of poverty. There is a stereotype of the casino tribes with the per capita, but that's a stereotype with no real validity. There's a few tribes which do have capital, income, but the vast majority of people in Los Angeles are not members of that tribe. And in fact, there are no casinos in Los Angeles itself or Los Angeles County. Everything is located outside of the county. Having said that, people think, well, there's these tribes now with casinos, like Foxwoods and things like that. Why aren't they, you know, just giving all their money to help all the tribes throughout the country? Which fails to recognize that we are all different. Each tribe has its individual culture, what the Lakota on the Pine Ridge Reservation do and what the Pachanga people do is a very different type of thing, and culturally speaking. So, with a population as diverse as the Native American population is in the city of Los Angeles, you need programs that reach out by tribally, you know, pan-tribally, pan-Indian, the way we used to talk about it in the '70s with the American Indian Movement, with the Pan-Indian Movement, where we want to have tribes maintain their individual cultures, but work to provide programs that reach across cultural and tribal boundaries to help the people as a whole. And I think LAUSD with its own Native American group is a good step in that direction. The elderly side is a big question. You know, elderly daycare centers and things like that, that are indigenously focused. You've got the American Indian, United American Indian involvement down on 6th Street, I believe it is, where the elderly folks come in during the day, and they can sit around in their commons room there, and they get meals, and there's social interactions, there are diabetes awareness programs, there are programs that help provide them information on how to register for assistance and different aid programs. For many years, I have worked with a few people here in Los Angeles to try to get a storefront Native American legal aid organization going, not to provide litigation information or take on lawsuits, but only to help people fill out forms. Because when you're dealing with a population that is often very uneducated, just the simple administrative forms that you and I might glance at and fill out in five minutes, they struggle with, and they give up. And so, programs such as that to help the elderly, I think, would also be a tremendous help for the native population in Los Angeles.
Okay. Thank you. Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So, without objection, we will move you forward as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, colleagues, we will now go, seeing as there are no public comment cards still, we'll go to Item 8, and I'd like to invite up Recreation and Parks Frank Herrera to give us the background on the juvenile justice program.
Item number 8, Department Recreation and Parks report relative to proposed memorandum of understanding with Los Angeles County Probation Department for the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act After-School Leaking and Richmond and Supervision Program grant award to help fund the Clean and Safe Spaces Parks Youth Employment Internship Program.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Herrera. I'm a Principal Recreation Supervisor for the Department of Recreation and Parks, and we're here to ask you to accept funding in the amount of $504,432, $30 for the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act. This is our 14th year that we've received this funding. This funding goes to the YEIP program, which is the Youth Employment Internship Program. And basically, Recreation and Parks, or Class Parks section, provides an internship program that we offer beginning in September, runs through approximately April through May. There's three sessions. Each of the sessions has approximately 100 kids that'll go through one of three internship programs. One is a CSI program, one is a sport. One is a CSI program, one is a sports management program, and the other is a day camp training program. In addition to that program, this grant provides funding throughout the year for additional staff and materials for after-school program. And it also provides funding for what we call our Friday Night Extreme Teens, which is basically an extension of the Summer Night Lights program where we keep our facilities open later on Friday nights. So, that's about it.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Herrera. This is great. And I also want to give a shout out to our congressional friends, Adam Schiff and Tony Cardenas, because it is the act, the Crime Prevention Act, that they shepherded through Congress to make this available. And my question would be, in terms of neighborhoods of focus, in terms of the services, could you elaborate on that? Because it's a nice sum of money, but we have many, many parks and lots and lots of need. So, can you elaborate on how you utilize these funds in our parks?
So, as I mentioned-
Are you gonna make sure they're only spent in the first, ninth, and the thirteenth?
Thank you for cutting to the chase.
We can do some of that. As I mentioned before, this program is administered through the Class Parks section of the Recreation and Parks. And currently, there are thirty-six Class Park sites that are stretched from one end of the city to the other. In terms of specifically speaking about CDs, there are Class Park sites located in almost all CDs of the city with the exception of four, five, and twelve. So, and basically, the original sites that were select, back in 2000 when the program began, the criteria for selecting SNL sites was based on the income, low-income status, and also the at-risk youth consideration also taken. So, the money is being utilized at those facilities that they need it the most.
Terrific. Well, I just, I just want to thank you, Frank, and all of your colleagues for keeping this going, doing the behind-the-scenes work to make sure that we get these resources. And I just want to say thank you and then open up at the table to my colleagues.
Yeah, I was pleased to see it looks like about five parks in my district that are in the class program. But, tell us a little about these internships. How long do they last? What kinds of skills do the interns learn? How are they selected? How are they compensated?
Each, each of the Class Park sites are notified that we're offering the internship program. So basically, the youth apply at their facility. In terms of specifically as far as the programs, once again, there is a day camp training component, a CSI component, and also a sports management component. And it consists of an eight-week session. The kids will go to a recreation center on a Saturday, they'll spend about seven to eight hours at that facility. Curriculum, there's a certain amount of focus specific to the individual programs, whether that be CSI or-
That's the program. But talk about the interns, because these are the, I'm curious about the interns that are gonna be, I guess, delivering these services or what's the role?
Well, no, no. Well, those, we refer to the interns as the kids that are participating in the program.
So, give us an idea of how many are at a particular site and kind of-
Well, we have approximately 100 per session, we have three sessions. So it's about 33 to 35 kids that attend each class with-
And they're selected by the park director or the first come, first served? How are they selected?
Basically, they apply at their recreation site and then they're just basically selected on a first come, first served basis. Also, it depends whether or not they've participated in the program in the past. So, a kid may have participated in the day camp training program and so then, maybe the next session, we would allow them to participate in the sports management training.
This is 35 per site?
Well, there's, there's three sessions and we offer three programs per session. So, per session, there's approximately 100 kids that, 32, 33 to 32 kids, 35 kids that participate each session.
They get dispersed amongst all these sites that are here?
Correct. Well, no, no. There's, in total, there are nine sites where we offer the program in three different sessions. So, three sites, one session, the second session will have another three, and the third will have the third three, for a total of nine. Anybody that participates at a Class Park program can apply to be part of the program. We rotate the locations around the city so that everybody has an opportunity.
How long do the sessions last? Are they a couple of weeks?
They're eight weeks.
They're eight weeks sessions?
Eight weeks.
So, a summer session?
Seven to eight hours on a Saturday.
And do you calendar it between the traditional school year calendar?
Correct, yes.
Perfect. Okay.
And are the interns compensated?
They're given a stipend if they, if they attend all of the classes and, you know, go through the whole course of the program, they're provided a stipend.
How much?
I believe it's going to be $150 this year.
Colleagues, any other questions? Frank, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Recom Parks, thank you so much. I'm gonna recommend that we move forward to council and accept this wonderful resource again.
Thank you very much.
Without objection. Thank you. We will now go to item 11. And I'd like to invite Bernice Hollands to come up and also-
...program manager.
Very good. And Neil is up here. Wonderful. And item 11, Mr. Litt.
Item 11, LA for Kids Steering Committee report relative to reconciliation of prior year's status of active projects and strategic plan to complete program requirements for the 1997, 98 through 2026, 27 Proposition K program.
Good afternoon, council members. Bernice Hollands, the former program administrator at this point of the Proposition K program. For this item, I'm representing the LA for Kids Steering Committee that has oversight over the program. The program management team for the Proposition K program began a series of reconciliation activities that are summarized in this report. This is a voluntary undertaking for the primary purpose of identifying what resources we have available to complete the remaining program requirements. This was a significant undertaking that took well over a year to complete for a capital program that's managing over 100 active projects at this time. If I could just take a brief moment to acknowledge the contributing departments, Bureau of Engineering, Recreation and Parks, General Services, City Attorney, Cultural Affairs, CLA, Mayor's Office, and of course, my own office, the CAO. A big thank you. The slide, the cover slide there is actually one of our projects. It's really, represents the motivating force for our team. And that's simply to deliver projects that provide a safe and dynamic environment for children and their families to thrive. Moving to the first slide, I'm just gonna provide a brief overview of the program. It was authorized in 1996 through adoption of a ballot measure authorizing the program that was adopted by city voters. The program is currently in program year 18. The report was written within the context of program year 17. Our total authorization is for 30 years and the program will conclude in 2026, 27. We budget at $25 million annually for total funding authorization of $750 million over the 30-year life of the program. The oversight was delegated by council to the LA for Kids Steering Committee that is comprised of the Mayor's Office, the CLA, and the CAO six serving as chair. We have a lot of use restrictions on the funding, but just in the most simple terms, the bulk of the funds, 82% will be used on acquisition and park development projects. Only 3% is available for program administration and 15% we utilize to maintain the projects that we've completed in prior years under the program. In terms of the report, it addresses three major areas. The first area is identifying what we have accomplished under the program during years one through 16. The program responsibilities for Proposition K transition several times to different city departments. So it was really essential that we developed a unified records-keeping system to just document what we've accomplished. So the report recommendations do include some accounting and programmatic adjustments that we need in order to close out these years. The second area that we focus on is reporting on what the program is currently in process of developing. We do have funding recommended to address funding shortfalls for projects that are ready to proceed into construction at this time. We do this analysis on an ongoing basis to ensure that we're able to maintain our project schedules. And we're already in process of working on recommendations for the next set of shortfall recommendations. The third area, and this is really the most significant area of the report, focuses on the future program. It identifies what requirements the program still has to accomplish in the remaining 12 years. And it identifies funding that's available to resolve the shortfalls that we have on these remaining projects. Just as a snapshot of the program, this chart does a really good job of summarizing where we are. As I said, we're in year 18, we have 12 years remaining, and we have already accomplished the majority of the program requirements. There are two types of projects that we fund in the program, specified and competitive. The specified projects are a list of 183 that were listed in the ballot measure for specific scopes and a set funding level. At this point, we have already completed 112 of those. We have 38 projects that are in active development and we only have 36 projects remaining and 12 years to complete those projects. So like I said, we're well ahead of what we need, where we need to be at this stage of the program. In terms of the competitive program, very similar story. We're required to award 143 million. We've awarded 127 at this point through eight competitive cycles. That includes 168 projects that have been completed and 63 that are in active development. What we will need to do is award an additional 27 million. We're actually in process of preparing the next RFP that will be released in March 2015 for the next three-year cycle. Now, here's the result of the whole analysis that we conducted. We've been able to identify exactly what we need to retain to complete the program and we've been very liberal, made sure that we tried to fund as many improvements as possible. And what we still came up with was $93 million in surplus capacity. What we are suggesting that we use these funds to do is to basically offset our shortfall on the remaining 36 specified projects. This is essentially all that the monies can be used for, given all the restrictions that apply to these funds. And even after tapping this capacity, we would still have $29 million that's free in the clear. We're not recommending a use for those funds at this time. We want to reserve those monies. We have, BEE has done a very good job working with internally and with their own consultant team to estimate what is required to complete the remaining projects. But those numbers are not set in stone at this point. It is still gonna go through the design process, additional review with the respective council offices before the final budget estimate and scope is locked in. So, it's possible that we may have to address the shortfalls beyond the $64 million level, but we have a sufficient reserve to do that. As well as the surplus capacity, we also have program interest monies that are available. These monies also have very restricted uses. And so, what we are recommending is utilizing these funds for 11 high-priority projects that have been identified. And these projects were selected primarily based on their readiness to proceed into design and construction activities at this time. They were also identified by the operating departments, Recreation and Parks, Cultural Affairs as high priorities. And these are also projects that the community members that the council appoints who participates in our budget process, they have also identified these projects as priorities for the communities that they represent. What we would be able to do by committing these funds for these 11 projects is that it effectively increases the money that we have available for the remaining 25 projects. So even though those 25 aren't included in this first set, they will have additional resources to complete the scopes. At this, oh, I want to stress at this point that this is not the last opportunity that we'll have to commit this bulk funding to projects. We're still completing reconciliation activities and anticipate to have additional residual funds available at some point this year for commitment. We've talked to Councilmember Price about funding, residual funding that we would use for South Park. We're anticipating to move that report forward in December. But we also believe we have additional program interest monies that could be utilized. So once we validate those numbers, we will come back to this body to make additional recommendations on committing those funds. At this point in the presentation, the remainder is really a gallery, a photo gallery of what we've accomplished under the program at this point. I am prepared, if you'd like, to go over the specific impact to the projects in your council district. Do you want to do that this time or at the end?
I think maybe at the end.
Okay, perfect.
Then we can kind of talk about, you know-
Okay, that's perfect. So this slide, what it does is it summarizes the different types of projects that we've been able to fund under Proposition K. In total, we've completed 280. I'll just touch briefly, that includes 26 childcare centers, we did seven museum, theater, and zoo facilities, 22 junior arts and youth facilities, one intergenerational center that includes a senior and youth component, aquatic features, 19 projects with aquatic features, six with various types of skate park features, 139 just general park development facility renovations, 24 lighting projects, 16 urban greening and trail development, and 20 acquisition projects. And of course, there's overlap, but these are the broadest categories. Now the fun part. This is the face of Proposition K. This is what we have been able to accomplish under the program. The first set of projects on this slide are the regional projects. These are projects that serve multiple communities within the same council district and some projects serve the entire facility. So I know most people are probably familiar with all that are pictured here, but Banning Museum, it was refurbishment of the grounds in the garden. Boyle Heights Sports Center, construction of the gym and various landscaping improvements. Cabrillo Aquarium, we built an education wing with various learning labs and water improvements. Children's Museum is probably our most successful project at this point in terms of the adversity that, the issues that we've had to overcome. That project is slated to open this fall. Griffith Observatory, of course, the significant expansion project that was completed over five years ago now at this point, well over. Hanson Ranger Station, brand-new station that opened at Hanson Dam this year. LA Riverfront Park, that is the CD2 portion, there'll be other portions. We're developing six, three segments of the river. Echo Park Lake, MacArthur Park, that's the synthetic soccer and children's play area pictured. South LA Sports Center, building that, actually Aquarium building that facility. Southeast Valley Skate Park, that park is close to being completed, it's being developed in two phases. That's phase one that's pictured. And then, we did a new youth wing for the Zoo Discovery Science Center. The central region includes council districts one, four, CD5 at south of Mulholland, CD11 that's north of the Interstate 10, and CD13. And so, just to go quickly over those projects, the Lincoln Heights facility that's pictured actually has achieved four Proposition K scopes. The Roller Hockey and Boxing Gymnasium is pictured, it also has a junior arts center and a youth center as part of that project. Marshall High School Track, we also provide funding to LAUSD as well as nonprofit organizations. You'll see several of those projects represented. Waddles Mansion, this was improvements to the ground. Children's Institute, we did a greening project there. Lexington Pocket Park was acquisition and development. Poncedia, development of the gym. Pacific Palisades, a new gym, various development of athletic fields. Pecan Park, a new gymnasium, and then the Eagle Rock Childcare Center. And the southern region, which includes districts eight, nine, 10, 11 south of the I-10, and council district 15. Here, we did two projects at Harvard Skate Park, I'm sorry, Harvard Park, the skate park and the pool and bath house project. Fred Roberts was a complete build-out of the old gym, of the old gym. Ross Snyder Baseball Fields, Manchester Junior Arts, that facility is actually operating right now and we're doing additional improvements to the theater component. Lafayette Rec Center, another new gym, Culver-Slauson New Community Center, Rosecrans Baseball Fields, and then WLCAC, one of our nonprofits, developed a skate park in CD15. Our last region, the valley region, includes council districts two, three, five, north of Mulholland, six, seven, and 12. These projects, the Verdugo Hills acquisition, we actually funded three rounds through our competitive grant process of acquiring portions of the Verdugo Hill range. North Hollywood Intergenerational Center, that's one that has the senior and youth component. Canoga Park Junior Arts, TLC Therapeutic Living Center for the Blind, we provided various assistive technology there. Sepulveda Basin Garden Center developed the restroom. Sun Valley Junior Arts, also known as Stone House. Delano Synthetic Soccer Field, Silmar Splash Pads, Andreas Pico Adobe, various- Andreas Pico Adobe, various renovations on that facility. Aliso Canyon, acquisition and development of the park, and then Mason Childcare Center. And of course, there's, like I said, 280 projects in total. So this is just a small representation of what the program has accomplished. In terms of the report recommendations, this slide just provides a recap of most things I've already alluded to. We do need to do some accounting adjustments, just to take care of some funding overages. We're, like I said, have various residual funds that we will come back and recommend a use for. We also have projects that were completed by other funding sources, so we want to recognize those. In terms of our active projects, we would like to reuse $4.36 million in capital funds that were previously approved for park projects. This is one of the successful funding strategies that we use to continue to reutilize funds once we completed the original project. In terms of our future years, we're requesting authority, conceptual use of the Prop K surplus funding to move forward and start developing the remaining projects, knowing that we're able to address the funding shortfall, and then the commitment of the 16 million in interest funds for the 11 priority projects at this time. There is one amendment to the report recommendations that was provided to city clerk already, and that's simply to reappropriate funding for Children's Museum because that project is in final development.
Terrific. Bernice, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Neil, do you have something to add?
I think Bernice has said it all. If you have any questions, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
It's so encouraging to hear this. I just got to say, it was important for me, for you, to report to this committee on everything that's going on and provide a greater context. And also, I encourage, you're probably already doing this, but encourage the Prop K steering committee to meet on a regular basis with all of my colleagues for updates specific to the districts. That was very, very useful for me when I was a deputy for my predecessor. And I mean, I really cut my teeth on Prop K projects, really. And in fact, I met Neil Drucker 12 years ago at the Glassell Park Synthetic Fields over at Washington Irving Middle School. And so I have just a few questions, comments. Speaking of that, I was at Washington Irving Middle School a couple of weeks ago at the handball tournament. And we're doing some little improvements here and there to help. But that synthetic field is almost completely worn out. And the school has been ordered to actually remove it, and I'm working on putting a halt to that because underneath it is asphalt. So they would be removing this 12-year-old synthetic field and exposing, you know, a gargantuan asphalt hardscape on the schoolyard. So I'm trying to slow that down. But my question is, I noticed the 15% maintenance funding of the Prop K funds. So I think my question, first of all, we need to have, we need to address that for when a synthetic field wears out or runs its course, and if that would be considered a maintenance or a complete refurbishment and would require a new line item. But we need to start thinking about that now that we're in year 18, right, in terms of going back and addressing some of these issues.
Yeah, excellent comment and question, councilman. And that's something, actually, we've been talking about internally. That's something we'll have to work with the city attorney, obviously, to determine if we can consider that a maintenance. It's both on our competitive, non-city projects, L.A. Unified School District, and some of our nonprofits, as well as our city projects. Synthetic Fields, as well as all of the facilities we construct, have a lifetime. We've seen that synthetic fields can last as much as 10 years, but sometimes they only last five to seven years. One of the things we have done for future projects, and actually in our last grant round, is we reduce the maintenance period that the grantees are required to provide service and maintenance for certain types of projects. Synthetic Fields were one of them because we determined that it's just not fair to require them to, you know, basically provide 10, 15, 20 years of service payback for a facility that's only going to last seven to 10 years at most. So that is something we're going to have to continue talking about because I know we're going to have a number of these fields that are to go out of service in the next few years.
Makes sense. And this, you better believe I took a note when you said $29.1 million free and clear. I'm just giving you a hard time.
The adjusted figure is 45 million when you count the interest.
Again, council districts 1, 13, and 9, right? That's where it's got to go. No, but, so we have things that we can work with, and that's very encouraging. So your management of Prop K has been excellent. So thank you for that. And I'm also excited. Neil, I think I talked to you about the Glassell Park Synthetic Fields like eight years ago, and that's coming, and that's awesome.
Yeah, we have a new one in design, so that's fantastic.
That's really terrific. And Gil, what that will do is every year, this gigantic dust bowl forms at Glassell Park. So the synthetic field has needed to be there forever, and it's right adjacent to the playground and the tennis courts. So that's going to be really nice.
And close to the childcare center. And one of the things we've always been concerned about from the dust is the fact that we have young kids that are susceptible to dust. And this way, we'll reduce the dust as well as provide a nice place.
That's a real benefit. And also, I'm really thrilled, I'm like geeking out here, I'm really thrilled about the skate park in Echo Park, the skate park. I mean, that, we've been working on and lobbying on that for years. So that's a really great improvement.
And after our meeting onsite a few weeks ago, I'm happy to say that we're now going forward with design. So we'll be presenting to your office and then the community some design options in the next few weeks. So that's good news on that one.
So sticking with CD13, also coming up in your district, we have the second phase of Hollywood Rec Center. They'll activate after phase one completes. Virgil Village is a project that we actually already completed, but it has significant funding left over. So we preserve the capacity to do a second phase as long as we can find a suitable site within Virgil Village to do that. That's for soccer field.
Terrific. Great news.
And so one point I did want to make, the report talks about the projects that we'll be able to fund through the monies that we identified in this report. As part of developing our annual budget this year, we really look to make sure that we spread the resources throughout the entire city. And so at the same time that we have the 11 priority projects that are benefiting from the availability of interest funds, we made sure that we kept funding on all the district, on all the projects that were ready to proceed. So just because there's not funding in this report for a specific project, it has already been anticipated addressed through the annual budget.
Well, the great thing is that you're coming here now sort of mid-cycle, mid-30-year cycle, actually on the other half now, and with a very well-managed fund and a little bit of room for a discussion, to fine-tune, for everyone to get up to speed on the projects. And so we're in a really good place. So with, having said that, I'd like to open up the table to my colleagues.
I too. Thank you for your report. It's encouraging to know that there's some money left over, or at least it's been well-managed, if we have to say. There's a couple of references to the 11 priority projects. If you could outline what those were.
Okay. Those projects are identified on page 19 of the report. You can just read off the mine.
No, I have it.
Okay, it's in a chart format. And it includes two junior arts facilities. We have three remaining in the program. And so we're able to activate all except for one, simply because it has service providers already in place that we would have to disrupt to trigger the project. The remaining projects are recreation and park projects. A lot of them were regional projects. But again, these projects were chosen because they were ready to proceed into development and also because they required additional funding beyond what we could provide through the annual budget. Many of these, I went over the status just last week with Neil on these projects. Many of these projects are already well into pre-design, some are even in design activities. I'm also prepared to discuss the specific impact for CD9 projects, if you, okay. So for CD9 projects, as I mentioned, we will be able to add additional funds from our residual, residual funds that would provide about half a million dollars for perimeter fencing to complement the project that's already underway at South Park. We also have Trinity and Central, or your Trinity Recreation Center and Central Recreation Center are your only two remaining specified projects. So once, I've spoken with your staff, and we're working on looking at suitable sites to activate those projects. So that's really what's.
For expansions?
Yes.
Or additional land to acquire?
Yes, and.
Those, or just for Trinity?
That's for both. And one of the options that your staff indicated they would like to pursue is looking at whether or not we could acquire a single site because the two facilities are essentially in parallel, and perhaps triggering a central site that would accomplish both scopes and utilize all the funding that's available for those two projects. We haven't yet gotten to the point of identifying the types of services that you would want to see at those various facilities. But as I said, we're not able to initiate that project at this time until we identify a suitable site. However, we're actively working on doing that.
And then money's going to be sort of reserved then for that?
The money for the specified.
Comes through, it's.
The money for those projects are tied to the projects. It can't be taken away. It's money that's available through the end of the program. Where we're going to, we're going to continue to work through the annual budget process that's already in place of going through, in October, we convene the community members that you appoint to participate in the budget process. And they're really the ones who determine the priority of when these projects get activated. So like I said, we're doing our best to try to activate projects to complete the remaining program requirements as soon as possible. We do not think that it's going to take another 12 years to deliver on these 36 projects. But the 11 that were selected were selected because, like I said, they've been on hold for a long time. They're ready to go, and we're able to move forward now.
Thank you.
You know, I appreciate, like everyone here, all the great work that you've done and the great fiscal management leadership. I want to go back to what I was saying with respect to the disabled community when you were here earlier. Our restrooms are offensive. For different reasons, I've spent time at county jail, and they're comparable, not worse. And I think they're probably worse in the fact that they don't have lighting. And we've got to do better than that. I'm glad that we have a surplus, but then we should be thinking about a whole redesign because as I've gone around the parks in my district, the great efforts that were made to acquire resources and create these parks and these great soccer fields, people won't stay if there's not a public facility that they can use.
Certainly.
And let me finish. So what I see at some of these where we have the soccer fields, women, families, they've got to go to the restroom daily. It's just that simple. Lincoln Park, we're making great investments in there, but the facilities, they're unlit. And, you know, it's like being in county jail. MacArthur Park, comparable. And so we make these great investments, but there's this frustration of purpose if you're limited by the time that you have to go to use a facility. So I think we need to think about investing some of the surpluses into creating public space and public restrooms that people can actually utilize.
Okay, so to respond to those concerns, at this point, until we complete the remaining specified programs, we wanted to just reserve those residual funds just to make sure that we can complete that because the city is on the hook to finish those projects. Once we have refined estimates and we know, like, we have pretty good firm final estimates for all these projects, we have the opportunity to do additional competitive grants. And that's one of the ways that we can start targeting the additional resources to those types of projects. But unfortunately, with Proposition K, the only two ways that we can fund a project, it either has to apply and receive competitive funds, and like I said, we're opening up a new competitive round. Lighting is one of the categories that we will be able to fund. But also, it's limited to the specified projects. So if the projects weren't already listed in the ballot measure, we don't have the ability to add it to the program, except through the competitive grant process. Now, for all of the projects that we do work on, and Neil, you can confirm this, any new facility that we develop, any facilities that we're renovating, we make a special effort to address lighting, security, and ADA compliance issues. So those are already built into the projects, the specified projects that we're doing to the extent that the scope is compatible. And we do also have a small program on the outside that just does ADA improvements that's using some of our residual program funds outside of Prop K, using sites and facilities, CIAP monies. But like I said, the only way that we can increase beyond what's remaining on the program is to fund it through the competitive grant, and we would certainly have the ability to use that surplus capacity at some point. We will be committing $16 million through the ninth cycle RFP that's being released in March 2015. We really can increase the funding, the 16 million, beyond that level because that reduces what we have available for the specified program and all the other requirements that we have to fund under the program.
I did want to add, though, as Bernice said, we do always look at ADA, security, lighting, and all our products. We're completing the Losorda Field of Dreams right now in CD13. We put in a new restroom as well as additional lighting. In CD2 at Sun Valley, we're putting in a new synthetic soccer field. And as part of that, we're putting in a prefabricated restroom, which is something Recreation and Parks started a few years ago, and we're having good success with saving funds and putting in high-quality restrooms with internal lighting, heaters, things like that, everything we need to both provide security and full ADA accessibility. And then on one of our projects in CD11, which is called the Venice Beach Rose Avenue Restroom, we actually had an internal design competition. We had our architectural division architects prepare a number of different options, and then we brought those to the community and actually gave the community an opportunity to say, what would you like to see in your park? What would serve you the best? And we looked at a prefabricated restroom, a build-from-scratch, basically design it and build it, and something new to the city, restroom made out of old container cars. And for any of you who've been to Las Vegas downtown in the last few years, you'll notice that they've built something called the Container Park, where it's an entire park and retail establishment that's all built out of former truck containers. They renovate them, clean them, paint them, and once you're inside, you don't know you're inside a truck body, but basically.
Were you considering that at a location, or?
We are considering that. It's one of the things we've presented to the community. We're going to be meeting with the Venice Neighborhood Council in the very near future to present it to them as well. So it is something we're considering. If it ultimately doesn't get chosen for Venice, hopefully, we'll be able to put out one of our other parks in the near future because I think it's another way, you know, both to provide something different, a low-cost alternative, but also reuses the truck bodies, which is, you know, are just sitting all around. The harbor, for example, just literally hundreds and hundreds of unused old truck bodies and container cars that if we could start using them for park facilities or other city facilities, they have a use, and they're no longer taking up space or filling up landfills.
And so one more point that I'd like to make is Proposition K isn't the only funding source for park capital projects. So, you know, when there's significant need that isn't being addressed through this program, my office still gets involved with trying to find suitable funding. Sometimes we receive budget requests through the city budget process if we're not able to utilize Quimby or other supplemental park funding sources to address that. So we're certainly available to work with staff of your office to identify any needs that you have in your district that aren't being addressed at this time through the program.
Mr. Sadiq, you have me thinking because you bring up a great point. It seems that with the Prop K improvements, the entire facility usually gets created and built out to a high quality, and that more often than not includes restrooms that are ADA and they're nice. And then there's a disconnect to how they're maintained. There's been a historic culture of neglect with our restrooms in public facilities, and I think we need a new paradigm for looking at that. So I, I'm going to mull this over, and my question to you, Bernice, based on Mr. Sadiq's points, is there, you might have answered this, so forgive me if you did, and I just didn't get it, but is there a way to take a look at the packaging of the restrooms that really need to be renovated and brought up to a standard that's acceptable to the general public, and then tie them all in one big package for a Prop K grant in future years?
Anything on that level would definitely need the Department of Recreation and Parks to take kind of the forefront on doing the needs assessment and everything. I didn't want to get into this level of complication, but we have restrictions on our competitive funds. We have categories of funding that we're allowed to utilize the funds for. So the 27 million that we've reserved in the budget to meet the remaining competitive requirements, they're only for four categories that remain, schools, lighting, water improvements, and open space for the last one. So these aren't the categories where all the, you know, kind of slick, you know, really high needs projects can be funded for. So what we've asked for. So what we've asked for in the report is essentially the ability to complete the specified projects, to complete the, what we have to fund in competitive. And when we get probably just a couple of years, I'm guessing really beyond this next competitive cycle, we'll know exactly where we are and really how much additional monies we can put into the competitive program. And at that point, we would not be restricted to the four remaining categories. Once we meet our requirements in the four remaining categories, then we can go back and fund projects from all eight categories. And then there really wouldn't be restrictions on what types of projects we fund. But this is something where it certainly merits analysis and a needs assessment at this point, and we can certainly start planning for how to address this need. The solution is not going to come only from Prop K. It would come from all the funding sources that we have available. But your three council offices are all identifying this as an issue, so it's something that we need to look at, both as a program and then, like I said, under the greater umbrella of Recreation and Parks programming.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm going to recommend that we do move this forward based on you had an amendment.
Yes, just one amendment to reappropriate funds already awarded to Children's Museum.
Children's Museum.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Lyd, so noted. So I'm glad you brought that up and Mr. Sadio, because I think for a future, a near-future conversation, it looks like we're a couple of years away from having that robust conversation about addressing that. In the meantime, we can take a look at additional tools that exist elsewhere.
I think the conversation should start now, but like I said, in terms of actually putting the funding into a competitive cycle, that would be the next one after this next three-year cycle.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk to you more about that container concept.
You got it, Councilman.
For a park, I got a couple of spots for you.
And so if I could just mention, we did not talk about the projects funded in CD1. Councilmember Sadio, we have the shortfall for Cypress Park Community Center addressed through this report. Elysian Park is one of the priority projects. We also have funding in the budget for Albion Riverside Park, Lincoln Pathways, the expansion of Alpine Rexon, also known as the Orton-Yale Project. And then we have the county partnering with us to restore the Fort Moore Fountain that has not been operational since I was born. So we're very excited to get that back online. That one's right on Hill Street. You see it all the time.
Right on the backside of the entertainment school, right here.
It was a junior high school that my father went to.
Maybe the fountain was working then.
It was working then.
We'll bring it back.
We will get it back for you.
Very good. So without objection, we'll approve the report as amended?
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, do we also retroactively go back and approve items 1, 3, 6, 7, 9, and 10?
Yeah, are those the ones?
Those are the ones that were, what I'm concerned.
Right, we did consent items, and then one, Mr. Sadio, involved someone who withdrew their nomination for a commission, and one involved a commission appointee who wasn't able to be here. But there's a date certain, August 1st, that necessitates us to move forward, and so that's the business that we conducted before your arrival. Wonderful. All right, so does that tidy us up, Mr. Lyd?
Yes, it does.
And again, no comment cards, no general comment cards. Seeing as there is no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Congratulations.